Good morning, everyone. And welcome to the May 20 meeting of the Portland City Council. Would you please call the roll?
Fish.
Here.
Saltzman.
Here.
Novick.
Here.
Fritz.
Here.
Hales.
Here. Welcome, everyone. We have some proclamations and communications up front, and then we'll get to the regular council calendar after that. First, I'm very happy to begin with a proclamation about a really important part of our community. Joe, why don't you come on up, because Joe Wall's going to be leading a little bit of a presentation. It says, "Whereas the city of Portland is proud of its diversity and draws strength from the rich cultures and traditions of all community members, and whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month is an opportunity for all individuals and organizations to recognize the contributions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders to the cultural, civic, and economic life of Portland for over 150 years, and whereas the Asian American and Pacific Islander community is comprised of many languages and ethnicities, and their vibrant history ought to be shared with all Portlanders, now therefore I, Charlie Hales, Mayor of the City of Portland, Oregon, the City of Roses, do hereby proclaim May 2015 to be Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Portland and encourage all residents to observe this month." So let's hear it for that important part of our community. Thank you. Welcome. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor Hales, and the members of council. Joe Wall with the Office of Equity and Human Rights. I guess I'm the designated spokesperson for this reading of the proclamation. I want to thank all of the members of the community for having come out to help us celebrate this proclamation. Each May, our nation and our city come together to celebrate the contributions and honor the sacrifices made by Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders to help forge our country and shape our great city. We're reminded that over 170 years ago, Japanese immigrants first set foot on American shores and opened a path for millions more. We remember 1869 when Chinese workers laid the final ties of the transcontinental railroad after years of backbreaking labor, a railroad that they would later not be allowed to even ride on. And we remember Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders who have made our country and our city bigger and brighter again and again, from Native Hawaiians who continue to deal with the devastating impacts of the overthrow of their monarchy, to the generations of more recent immigrants who shaped our history, reaching and sweating and striving to give their children something more. Their story is the American story, and this month, we honor them all. Here in Oregon, Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders labored in and helped shape some of our most important industries, including logging, fishing, agriculture, and business, as well as helping to facilitate and grow our international trade. I'm personally reminded of the heroic contributions of great Asian American civic leaders like Bill Nato, without whose vision we would not have streetcars, the Skidmore Fountain, or the Japanese-American historical plaza, or of local treasures like Robert Murase, who was known worldwide as a visionary leader in the landscape architecture profession, who, like Bill, left us way too soon. This month, we honor and celebrate the contributions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders, past and present, and look forward to their continued contribution to this country and our great city, and to remember that while prosperity is coming to many, that there are those who still suffer and are not sharing in this prosperity. So let us keep in mind something that PolicyLink CEO Angela Glover Blackwell said so eloquently, that when we lift up the most vulnerable in our society, everyone benefits. Thank you for this proclamation.
Thank you very much. And I'd love to invite our community leaders who are here to come up and take a picture with the city council. That would be an honor for us, so thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. And I'd love to invite our community leaders who are here to come up and take a picture with the city council. That would be an honor for us, so thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. And I'd love to invite our community leaders who are here to come up and take a picture with the city council. That would be an honor for us, so thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. And I'd love to invite our community leaders who are here to come up and take a picture with the city council. That would be an honor for us, so thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. We have some communications items and then another proclamation, so let's take item 488, please.
488, request of Michael Chappie-Grice to address council regarding the 2015 Alberta Street project.
Mr. Grice, come on up. Yes, please. Good morning.
Good morning.
And would you like Mr. Zeibach to come up with you?
Mr. Zeibach and Mr. Geese.
Okay, please, if they could. Yeah, just read those other two, please, Sue. They're all here on the same subject.
And that's request of, on number 489 and 490, request of Bob Zeibach, request of Wayne R. Geisi regarding the 2015 Alberta Street project.
Welcome. Good morning.
I will first acknowledge Asian American Pacific Islander Month and your declaration. We've enjoyed Black History Month and Martin Luther King Holiday, and understand the importance of that particular recognition for that community.
Thank you.
These remarks are published for you as well. Some I were able to drop off, and so I hope that you can follow along. I'll just stick to my time and read it. Good morning and greetings, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for your service and for your early scheduling of our presentation. As you may know, we are planning to attend Lou Frederick's tribute ceremony at the Oregon Legislature later this morning to Tuskegee Airmen Carl Diaz. Of course, you know that we are teaching aviation to fifth and sixth graders at Portland Community College and are in league with the Atlanta Chapter of Tuskegee Airmen. The Northeast Alberta Street project sits amid the many meritorious causes that I've heard you entertain at the community meetings at Floyd Light and George Middle Schools. Northeast Alberta Street, from its early days when its trolley rolled and sounded its bells, to the mid-sixties and seventies when it was teeming with Negro citizens and a diverse population, to its current state of postmodern business bonanza and arts mecca status, Alberta Street represents one of the most important historic places and historic opportunities in the city. Were it not for the influence of my mentor, Congressman Augustus F. Hawkins, who has fueled my 46 years in public education, and who authored the Civil Rights Act, the Voting Rights Act, and the Title I law, and were it not for the fact that the research study that we are proposing and that you have before you has already been done in 1992, giving it a good chance for success this time around, and the recommendations in particular that are on the inside cover, and if it weren't for the support of Police Chief O'Day, who can see the connection between youth employment and saving lives, even the lives of officers on duty, and if it weren't for the advocacy of Mr. Ben Berry, one of the brightest men in the city has ever been fortunate to have on his payroll, and from Superintendent Carol Smith, the advocacy of PDC and the good offices of Tiffany Pinson, if it weren't for the steady champion of the esteemed entrepreneur broker Sam Brooks, if it weren't for the letter to the mayor from Ralph Evans and the Coalition of Black Men, who are here today with us, detailing the multiple ways that this project serves the objectives of the National League of Cities and the Black Male Achievement Initiative, especially employment, and let me interrupt to say that when I left San Francisco, a group of mothers are convened monthly there. It's called the Healing Circle. All of those women's sons have been murdered, and they say, nothing stops a bullet like a job. If it weren't for laying this Alberta Street project alongside those other meritorious projects and seeing the options being more applied technology, more relevant to a specific section of the city, more benefit to a target population, more honor to the residents and the businesses on Alberta, particularly the longstanding businesses, and if it weren't for the potential to offer solutions to compelling disparities on every metric affecting those young people with the greatest need, we could afford to abandon this effort. But we can't. This is the first time that I've come before the city council in my 68 years. I want to stress the importance of that, and I want to appeal to you with logic and reason, but more with common sense and opportunity to deliver on a commitment to see this through, to replicate a study that has proven success, and that's what President Barack Obama has expressed in his book, The Audacity of Hope. Hope is the only bee that makes honey without any flowers. Nothing stops a bullet like a job. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Zeibach?
First, I'd like to say, go Generals. And next, I'd like to thank Carla Love-More and Sue Parsons and Josh Alpert for making this possible. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, both Michael Grice and I have appeared before you before during the public meetings for the $31 million, and we are making the same request that we've made for some time. We would really like to have that money as startup that would guarantee that we would be able to employ 16 students this summer. So that's the first thing we're asking for.
Not all 31 million.
Not all 31. Just a small fraction, $20,000, and we could be off and running. The second thing is, we would like to have some connection with the city, an ombudsman or somebody in that position that could explain to us how to work with the city. Both Mr. Geese and I are from out of town, and Michael is busy with lots of other work, and we've been confused at times. We've done our best, but we've dealt with different committees and different groups, and we could have been a lot more efficient if we'd just had somebody that could have pointed the way for us. So startup capital, a guiding light, and then the third thing, I would like to ask the Commissioners, what we really need is good connections to the Portland business community. We're looking to create jobs for kids to, I shouldn't say kids, I should say young adults, 16 to 22 years of age. They need to be connected to business leaders in the community. Business leaders looking for diversity employment need to be connected to young adults that are being exposed to the very types of technical and communications opportunities that we're offering. These students will be working with the latest technology, with the latest individuals in the community, and so we need to be connected to technology companies that you may be aware of, Google, Apple, Intel, HP, and we need to be connected to employers that are looking for a diverse workforce. We are connected to students, thanks to Mr. Grice and his outreach in the communities, and so that's all we're asking.
That's great.
Your individual support and assistance, somebody to guide the way for us, and $20,000 out of $31 million. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Geese?
Morning. Mayor Hales, members of the commission, my name's Wayne Geese. I'm kind of an old cuss. I'm 95 years old, so I'll give you a little bit of my background. I served in the legislature in 1955 and 57, and you might wonder why I'm interested in the city of Portland. Before 1930, I went to Occle Green Grade School, so I have some feeling for this city. I'm here to support these two men and their project. I've worked with them since the first Alberta Street project, and there's no two men in Oregon that are more dedicated to do something for these people than these two men that I'm sitting with. I think Michael Grice, Chappie, as I know him, really outstanding in education, and Bob Zeibach is noted in forestry, and for his PhD, he was probably one of the first students from Oregon State that has an environmental science PhD. So these men are two people that you can depend on to really do a project and to make it come out right. I've probably worked for over 35 years in the timber industry, attempting to get a federal forest management plan that provides jobs, and it leads right into what Chappie said. There's nothing better to stop a bullet than a job, and so I can't impress hard enough that these are important things. The three of us are also working and have open discussion with Oregon State University to open student programs in forestry, in the College of Forestry, for the black students that would come from this area. So I guess you can say I've dedicated to jobs, and I thank you for allowing me to have this time.
Well, thank you all for coming, and it's just kind of a sweet coincidence that we have all these students from Grant and our superintendent here today, hearing some volunteers in the community come forward and talk about how to connect young people to work. So I bet it's encouraging for them to hear that it's not just their teachers that care about their future, so appreciate you all very much being here today.
I'll take this occasion to salute President, I mean, Principal Campbell, and Carol Smith for her leadership and the students. Bob Zeibach and I met on a wrestling mat in 1962 at Grant High School, so.
Who won?
It was a draw.
One last quick thing. We gave you these reports today from 1992, but the recommendation on the inside cover is a summary that we just put together, and think if we'd listened to our children with what they had to say in 1992, where that neighborhood would be today, and think what the kids today, or the young adults today, could produce. That's what we're trying to achieve here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll follow up with you. Thank you so much. Okay. Item 490? 491, please.
491, request of Trina Sutton to address council regarding homeless rest area in Multnomah County.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good morning, Amanda.
I probably can't add on to that quote about, nothing stops a bullet better than a job, but I'm going to tell you what. I have been working with the homeless population in the southeast for several years. I've been training at Right to Dream Too, which I'm so grateful for, because I'm going to tell you what, I know my people. I may be a little bit tarry now, because we lost another one yesterday. People are going to look at him and say, he was just a homeless drug addict. Well, I'm going to tell you something about Dan. He volunteered to do food boxes for 11 years at Clackamas Service Center where I work. He was a veteran of the Gulf War. He's been sober for over a decade. Being diabetic, the homeless lifestyle, you eat bread, you eat white bread, you just, your body can't take it. For people to learn how to thrive, to get out of survival mode and get into prosperity mode, they need to have a hand up, not a hand out. I've been working on the concept, we call it My Backyard, which is a poke-in-the-eye to the NIMBY, not My Backyard mentality. If people could know the folks like I know, they are not wastes of skin, they are not lazy. They are good, decent people that do need help. My backyard is designed to partner with many, many people, many agencies, to get them into a place of safety where they won't be beaten, where they won't, there's no drugs or alcohol allowed in. We have 24-hour security, just like at Right to Dream Too, and these folks can come in, and they are required to work on whatever it was that made them homeless in the first place. That could be drug and alcohol addiction, that could be losing your job, it could be domestic violence, but it gives them a safe place to go. And I really want to thank the mayor's office. I worked with Josh Albert, I worked with Jillian. I am just so impressed with you, Mayor Hales, at your progressive policies in dealing with this. I can tell you're a mayor and a council that actually cares. What we're asking for is, I've got a lawyer, three lawyers that have volunteered on my team, we're working for a 501(c)(3) status. We're going to be under somebody else's umbrella, but we need startup money. But I have given the mayor's office the documentation to show that putting a person in a transitional, and I will call it a camp, because it's just transitional, and giving them safety will allow them to take care of whatever is needed, which could be schooling, so they can go into more traditional housing. But if you put people from the street that have lived in survival mode for so long right into housing, you're setting them up for failure. I'm literally begging people for help. We can save the city and county millions of dollars. It's been proven over the years. They've estimated $14,000 per homeless person, and if you get them the help that they need, traditional housing into housing, it will be half that cost, and that's just temporary cost. I just would beg you, please, to consider this. Like I say, I'm so grateful to Josh, but we can't, my folks cannot take another winter out there. It is horrible out there, and I would just hope that all of you would please understand this, and I want to thank Amanda especially. She has just been wonderful. She's a very big champion for all her constituents, and that's to be applauded. I talked to Commissioner Saltzman about domestic violence issues. He was so wonderful, just that one meeting, but he really cares about what happens to victims of domestic violence. So I just want to thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, thanks for your advocacy, and we look forward to working with you as a partner.
Thank you, Mayor Hales.
Good morning. Thank you. You're here. Okay. Item 492?
492, request of Lightning Watchdog X to address council regarding surplus property reform.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Lightning. I represent Watchdog X. An issue that still concerns me is on the surplus properties. Again, I'd like to see policies in place that require a licensed broker to do any transaction on any surplus property pertaining to the city of Portland, and/or have a up-to-date appraisal that the public can review upon the sale, to make sure that we are in a market range of what the property should sell for, based upon a legitimate appraisal and/or a licensed broker's opinion and analysis. Why I say that is the public deserves to get the highest price on any property. These properties tend, upon the sale, to go back into the individual bureaus and/or general fund. Again, that also benefits the overall services throughout the city. I will not change my position on this until I see licensed brokers and/or up-to-date appraisals on these properties. I've talked to a very respected broker, Jennifer Meadeck, from Norris, Bex, and Simpson. I have talked to her on this issue extensively. She agrees with me on this, and would like to see licensed brokers brought in and begin to market these properties more effectively, to make sure that we get the proper exposure on a global basis to get the highest values on these properties, which in turn helps the public as far as having to come up with additional money. Again, I'd like to see certain surplus properties put back on the open market. As you know, Mayor Hales, you made some great improvements on the urban renewal properties coming back on the market on the tax base. If you start to look at the surplus properties, we have, my understanding, close to $35 billion in capital assets. We have a lot of surplus properties sitting out there that we are not utilizing. Again, when we have them sitting out there like that, we are not getting taxes off of these properties. When we put those back on the market upon a sale with a reputable broker, we don't only get the highest value of that property that's sitting idle, we also begin to get tax revenue. And people need to understand that 2017, we're looking at the PERS issue again on the COLA that's going to be recalculated, and we better start looking at that very close at this time. So any property that goes down to the open market, I will be watching very closely, and that goes to any nonprofit also. I would like to have the nonprofits go to certain foundations, get the money, come back and pay fair market value to the city. You do not have enough money to be giving these properties away at no dollars. We have too much debt, and I want this to be looked at very close. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Okay. Let's move on to item 493, please.
Are we doing the consent?
Oh, sorry. Want to do consent first? We should. I don't believe there are any withdrawals of items from consent. We have a short consent calendar this morning, anything to remove? Okay, then let's vote on the consent counter as printed.
Fish.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Novick.
Aye.
Fritz.
Aye.
Hales.
Aye. Okay. 493.
493, proclaim May 20, 2015 to be a day of recognition for Grant Magazine.
Mr. Fish?
Thank you, Mayor. This week and next week, we're going to have an opportunity as a council to recognize and honor outstanding high school students in our community, students who have received national recognition for their work. And today, it's a great honor to welcome the Grant High School family and their outstanding student journalists, who have won a very prestigious award, Mayor, and to issue a proclamation. So with one caveat, which is- renewal properties coming back on the market on the tax base. If you start to look at the surplus properties, we have, my understanding, close to $35 billion in capital assets. We have a lot of surplus properties sitting out there that we are not utilizing. Again, when we have them sitting out there like that, we are not getting taxes off of these properties. When we put those back on the market upon a sale with a reputable broker, we don't only get the highest value of that property that's sitting idle, we also begin to get tax revenue. And people need to understand that 2017, we're looking at the PERS issue again, on the COLA, that's going to be recalculated, and we better start looking at that very close at this time. So any property that goes down to the open market, I will be watching very closely. And that goes to any nonprofit. Also, I would like to have the nonprofits go to certain foundations, get the money, come back and pay fair market value to the city. You do not have enough money to be giving these properties away at no dollars. We have too much debt, and I want this to be looked at very close. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Okay, let's move on to item 493, please.
Are we do the consent?
Oh, sorry, wanted to do consent first. We should. I don't believe there are any withdrawals of items from consent. We have a short consent calendar this morning, to remove. Okay, then let's vote on the consent counter as printed.
Fish.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Novick.
Aye.
Fritz.
Aye.
Hales.
Aye. Okay, 493.
493, proclaim May 20, 2015 to be a day of recognition for Grant Magazine.
Mr. Fish.
Thank you, Mayor. This week and next week, we're going to have an opportunity as a council to recognize and honor outstanding high school students in our community. Students who have received national recognition for their work. And today, it's a great honor to welcome the Grant High School family and their outstanding student journalists who have won a very prestigious award, Mayor, and to issue a proclamation. So with one caveat, which is, there's a lot of names I'm going to be reading, and I apologize if I mangle anyone's name. I have them all spelled phonetically. But as the journalists know, you're only as good as the person reading your material, so I apologize in advance. But I first want to welcome to the dais our honored guests, Hunter Stewart, Koji Weber, Taylor Ishida, and Rennie Kendrick. Why don't you come forward and take a seat up front as I read the proclamation? Then we have two other honored guests. Dave Austin, you want to join us?
Just pull up another chair, if we can find a loose one there, so you can come up together.
Welcome, everybody. We'll give-
Or another couple of chairs, maybe.
We'll give Professor Austin a chair here.
Yeah, we'll treat him properly.
Endowed chair.
Endowed chair, says Commissioner Saltzman. That's very generous, Dan. Thank you. You beat me to the punch that, by the way, this is a subscription-driven magazine, so I'm hoping that everyone in this building, at the end of the day, does sign up and subscribe to Grant Magazine to help support these outstanding journalists. So, welcome. And as we all know, Grant Magazine recently brought home a prestigious Gold Crown Award from the Columbia Scholastic Press Association. And listen to this, this is the first time in Oregon's history that a publication has been so honored. This is a big deal. And we're so proud to welcome Grant students and journalists, family and friends today for this celebration. And it's my honor to read a proclamation the mayor is issuing today. We'll give you an original of the proclamation at the end of the ceremony, and then we'd all like to take a picture with you, if that's possible. Whereas Grant Magazine was launched in 2011 as Grant High School's student-run magazine, replacing the Grantonian newspaper. And whereas the goal of Grant Magazine is to tell the authentic stories of the high school community, including Grant students, faculty and staff, administrators, volunteers, and families. And whereas on March 20, 2015, Grant Magazine journalists were presented with a prestigious Columbia Scholastic Press Association Gold Crown Award at a ceremony in New York City. And whereas the Gold Crown Award is the association's highest honor, and recognizes the best student publications across our country, based on writing, design, photography, concept, and online coverage. And whereas Grant Magazine is the only Oregon publication to ever receive a Crown Award in our state's history. And whereas the Grant journalist's success brings honor and distinction to Portland Public Schools, to the city of Portland, the county of Multnomah, the state of Oregon, and Portland Public Schools. And whereas the student journalists have been supported by volunteer instructor Dave Austin, former editors and now college students Luke Bolton, Alex Gerald, and Maya Montgomery, Grant High School principal Carol Campbell, who we'll be hearing from shortly, family members, teachers, and friends. And whereas the award-winning Grant Magazine team includes the following students, apologies in advance, Janelle Arnold, Rowena Ballasubrami, Jessica Barr, Amber Burkhart, Sarah Hamilton, Sophie Hout, Finn Holly Blue, Cassie Hill, Taylor Ishida, Eliza Camerling Brown, Rennie Kendrick, Cade May, Molly Metz, Blue Midyet, Sawyer Montgomery, Amelia Morrison, Cassius Pettit, Jackie Raff, Bella Rideau, Hunter Stewart, Max Tapagna, boy, Lael Tate, Tess Waxman, and Koji Weber. Now therefore, I, Charlie Hales, Mayor of the City of Oregon, the City of Roses, to hereby proclaim May 20, 2015 to be a day of recognition for Grant Magazine in Portland, and encourage all residents to observe this day. Mayor, can we suspend the rules and applaud these student journalists?
Here, here.
Congratulations, David. Would you take it away?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Fish, for putting this forward. Mayor Hales, thank you for having us. The rest of the council, thank you. My name's Dave Austin, and I am the Communications Director for Multnomah County. But I'm here today proudly as the volunteer instructor of Grant Magazine. We're in our fourth year, and I apologize, Commissioner Fish, but this is the second year in a row that Grant has won the Columbia Gold Crown.
Wow. That's even better.
I need a better editor, excuse me. It's an editorial mistake.
We've got a bunch here who can handle that. I just want to say a few words and then put the real people who deserve the recognition up front, all these students. I do this because it's something, you know, we heard from some of the people today who testified and talked about helping kids find a path. It's so important, and I don't need to remind the council of that. But these kids are not kids, they're journalists, in every sense of the word. You have before you, I hope you got them, five copies of some of our issues from this year. And you can see that our coverage ranges from a story that Taylor Ishida photographed and wrote about two Grant alumni who were interned in Montana in the beginning of World War II, and then made it back to Portland, attended Grant, and graduated. And she wrote a very fine story about their lives, all the way to stories about students posting racist and misogynistic things on social media. And we conducted an investigation and brought that to light. These guys are about not just, you know, putting out PR for the school or the school district. It's about covering the fabric, the good and bad of the community. And our goal is to shed light on things, not to just point something out. We offer solutions. So I hope you'll, I really want to say I appreciate the effort by the council to recognize these folks. And I'd like to let them say a few words.
Please.
Thank you, Dave. Good morning. Yeah, there's a button right there. There you go.
Yeah, so my name is Hunter Stewart, and I'm a senior and editor, editor on a-
We had a huge technology upgrade recently, so nothing worked, so forgive us.
Push the button.
Push the button again.
You're with us.
Is it good? Nope.
Just use that one.
The whole thing moves. You can move the whole thing closer to you. That whole station moves.
Okay, there we go. All right. So yeah, my name is Hunter Stewart. I'm a senior and editor-in-chief this year as well. And I'd definitely like to thank the council for taking this time to recognize us. I can honestly say I've never worked harder for something in my life, but I've also never received such, just positive, I would kind of say positive feedback. It's much deeper than that. This has directed me in a way I know I would not be able to have if I had not participated in Grant Magazine. And as I'm going out to college, I now know I have a set of skills, but also mindset that I'll keep with me to navigate New York City next year. And definitely, I know everyone's talking about the team. And I know, if not for Grant Magazine and Dave's leadership, and then all the support that we've been able to have from our community and school, I would be one of those kids that would not have direction. I really didn't before I started this. And although, you know, there were definitely hard times, and I had to learn some hard lessons, but, you know, on my way out, I see all the, all your hard work goes into something in it. Even if you feel like you're at your lowest, or if you don't know really what the outcome will be, if you just stick with it, I now know how much you can take out of that. And that's something that Grant Magazine's shown me all the way through.
Who else wants to say something?
Rennie?
No, you're just trying to-
Hi, I'm Rennie Kendrick. I'm a junior and the managing editor, and also just a student journalist. And I just would like to say that this is my second year on magazine, and I would like to say it's just a really great community of students, really working hard, and it teaches you life skills that you would never learn in other classes, like interviewing people and meeting people. Those are things that you'll carry to any career or anything you pursue. And just seeing how we can come together as a team, I don't know if Dave mentioned this, but to get our Gold Crown Award, we had to travel to New York City. So as a team this year, we fundraised $42,000. Yeah, so all on our own accord. We have 440 subscribers. So it's been really cool to see how we can come together and really reach out to the community, just working as our own team.
Can I ask you, do you have an older sister at UP?
Yes, I do.
Just to show that, again, another part of the Grant story, Rennie's older sister plays soccer at UP, but we know her because she came and knocked on our door at city council and at the housing bureau, because she was interested in launching a program to combat homelessness in our community. And so, just another example of someone who's a graduate of Grant making a difference in our community. So congratulations to you.
Yes, thank you.
Well, let me just interrupt, because Rennie's, you know, she never takes credit where credit is due. Of that $42,000, she was personally accountable for about $21,000 of it. So, and also, she'll be busy this weekend because she's in the finals for the 1500 at the state meet in Eugene. So she runs around an awful lot.
The track and field runs in the family. There you go. Congratulations. Who else wants to say something?
So something else to, you know, as far as like what magazine does for all of us, it really opens up a lot of opportunities outside of school. So I wrote that story about the internment, you know, two alumni who were interned at the age of two and three. And so through that experience, I had to speak with a lot of different people to, you know, be able to capture that time accurately. So I now get to volunteer at the Oregon Niki Legacy Center downtown, working on preserving history. And it's an opportunity that you really wouldn't come by unless, you know, you had to write a story about Japanese internment. So it's just opened up a lot of new opportunities that are just really beneficial now. Yeah.
Congratulations.
Say something. You're an editor-in-chief.
You have the privilege of saying anything.
Similar to what Hunter is talking about, in terms of what I've gotten out of this class, certainly looking at the last or the first two years of my high school career, and then recognizing like a, more of a repeated process of doing work in other classes, and just kind of doing the minimum to get the best grade. Magazine has kind of taught me to go beyond that and then recognize, you know, the rewards I've gotten out of hard work. I know now, more than ever, what I want to do in my future, which is something that's, you know, exclusively, you know, Dave and I guess all the other members of the staff, and then my last two years on the staff have just kind of been incredible in terms of having the honor to guide some of the younger staffers, and also just have the opportunity to cover the community. So I'd like to thank you, Mayor Hales, and Commissioner Fish, and the rest of the council for honoring us today.
Thank you all. We have, thank you all. We have two other honored guests, and then we're going to just recognize one other group that's here. David, would you like to introduce our guests?
Yes, if they could come up, our principal, Carol Campbell, and our Portland School Superintendent, Carol Smith.
Thank you all.
Thanks, students. Thank you very much.
Welcome, ladies. We know it's a high honor that is happening here when both the superintendent and a principal join us for recognition. So this is a rare day. Thank you both. Carol?
Thank you. Yeah, and I want to thank the council and the mayor for recognizing the Grant Magazine. They're amazing. It's one of the best group of students that, and every year that it's like that. So it's not just this group, but I think the Grant Magazine brings the best out of our students that are able to participate. I also want to recognize Bill Dickey and Scott Ballow at Morel Inc., who, they're our business partner, who prints the magazine for us. They donate the printing. And also have exposed the kids to a little bit about what they do in their business, which is that whole, you know, CTE stuff that we're trying to do. Dave has lots of students who pursue careers after college or after high school, related to journalism, writing. I'm interviewed by the Grant Magazine students a lot. They hold me accountable in some cases. I think they all have me on speed dial, so I talk to a lot of them quite frequently, but it's a pleasure and an honor because of the quality of the work that they do. They report on things that the students need to know about. So it's unlike a regular school newspaper, and we're very fortunate to have Dave Austin as a volunteer. He volunteers his time to do this program. And we are adding another Grant Magazine class next year because it's something that students want to do, and we're going to provide kind of a training ground. So we're going to have a kind of a pre-class for students who are interested. So I just, I think the recognition should go to the students, for the most part, because they, they're the ones that produce this publication. They're there after hours, Saturdays, evenings, under the guidance of Dave Austin. So I feel really fortunate to be part of Grant and part of this publication.
Thank you for joining us. Carol?
And I'll just add my thanks for the, you taking the time and writing, doing a proclamation to recognize outstanding student accomplishment. I will just say, I think that what Grant Magazine is doing is some of the most powerful journalism in our community, and it's great to get national recognition for that. But they are really doing community building through journalism. And you also just hear the stories of personal transformation of students in every year of this publication, and every year it has gotten better. So, and I also will just extend a thanks to Dave Austin. It's powerful to me to have a volunteer come in and have this depth of engagement and profound impact, and really build something that is transformational for a community, but, and for the individuals who are getting to participate in it. So thank you for taking the time to recognize Grant Magazine. And you guys, congratulations. You're awesome.
We're going to pause in a second and ask if we can take a picture with the council. But there's one other group that's here I think, David, we should recognize, which is the parents and loving, caring adults and teachers that are here to support these young people. Would they please rise and accept our thanks for their role? The parents and the support.
And they haven't indulged in a commercial, but I will. I've noticed that your website is mobile-friendly, and you can go on either your smartphone or your laptop and subscribe to Grant Magazine, which I'm going to do, because I didn't know you could subscribe by mail. So I'm in, and we'll encourage others to follow that example and read some great journalism. So-
David, what does it cost for a one-year subscription?
Forty-two bucks. It's $42. Forty, if you just want to write us a check right now. But, yeah, and you get eight issues. We put out eight issues. We come out once a month, and appreciate that. And if you want to put that on your tweet or mailing list for us, we would accept that, too. But again, thank you for having us, and thank you for recognizing these kids who do real journalism. And it's, you know, the mainstream media follows us. So, read it first at Grant Magazine.
Actually, David, just to follow up on that, I will become a subscriber, too, partly because, just leafing through the issues you brought with you, there's an article here about tangible tunes by Finn Holly Blue, that says something which I had not learned from the mainstream media, they're apparently hiding it, which is that the sales of vinyl records have gone from a million a year in the early 2000s to nine billion a year now, and high school students are largely driving that. And that is fascinating to me, and I have to tell you, it makes me feel much less old. So sign me up. Thank you.
Great. It looks like, it looks like a real community service, as well as a great, a great opportunity for the students. So we appreciate that part of what's being done here as well. Good journalism, and good for the whole community.
Nice shout-out for Bill Dickey. I think now we can safely conclude that Bill actually runs a nonprofit business.
Yeah.
Because there's an event we go to where people don't thank him for doing the printing gratis or at a discount. So good for Bill. Photograph colleagues?
Please, please.
Do we get all the student journalists to come forward?
Okay, we'll move on to our regular agenda in a moment. Let those students get back to the final few days of classes here. Thank you for being here. Thank you for being here. Okay, let's move on to the regular calendar. If you're here to speak on a council item, please just state your name for the record. If you're a lobbyist representing a client, you need to let us know that according to city code. We typically allow three minutes per person to speak. Please testify only to the matter at hand, and we ask people to not make vocal demonstrations in the chamber, but if you agree with someone, give them a thumbs up, or if you feel compelled to give them a thumbs down. If you don't agree, go ahead, but we ask that we give our fellow citizens the chance to uninterrupted have their say here. If you have handouts, please give them to the council clerk. And lastly, if we need one, the council will be taking half-hour break at either 12:00 or 12:30, depending on our schedule, and I'll announce that when we get close to that point so that both the public and the council has warning that we're going to take a little bit of a break from the action. So, with that, let's move on to item number 494.
494, amend fee schedules for site development and enforcement.
Mr. Fritz?
Now for something completely different. The Bureau of Development Services collects fees under various schedules to fund services, including inspections, plan review, permit issuance, land use review, and customer assistance. The majority of Bureau of Development Services programs are self-supporting. A few programs receive general fund support, as we've discussed. The 2015-16 fiscal year will be the third consecutive year in which the Bureau of Development Services will not be raising fees in most major permit categories. The Bureau is currently in a financially stable position. Isn't it great to be able to say that? As construction activity and permit revenues continue to grow, reserves funds are at a healthy but not yet up to where we want them level, and because they, we've been streamlining operations during the recession, which has led to greater efficiency in delivering services to the community. And I need to pause there and thank all of the employees in the Bureau of Development Services who've faced some amazingly tough times over the last five years and are now on the opposite end of the spectrum, just working all hours of the day and night to catch up as the economy rebounds. So, thank you to everyone in the Bureau. So, this ordinance makes minor changes to a few select BDS permit fees in order to achieve cost recovery, meet new program requirements, reflect rising service costs, and provide incentives for compliance. The two fee schedules that will be impacted are the site development fee and the enforcement fees and penalties. Deborah Severt-Morris and Elshad Hajiav are here to provide us with the specifics. Director Paul Scarlett is out of the office today.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioner Fritz. My name is Deborah Severt-Morris, and I am the Bureau of Development Services Senior Business Operations Manager. Joining me this morning is Elshad Hajiav, who is our Bureau's Finance Manager. And we're here to propose several Development Services fee changes for the upcoming fiscal year. Now, as you know, the Bureau of Development Services promotes safety, livability, and economic vitality through the application of building and development codes. And as a Bureau, we provide a wide range of development services, including plan and land use reviews, permit issuance, inspection services, and also customer assistance. Most of our programs have the goal of being self-supporting, and in fact, 95% of our Bureau's operating funds do come from the collection of permit and related program fees. The significantly improved economy, along with our strong permit revenues over the last few years, is enabling our Bureau to propose no increases for the majority of our fees in the upcoming fiscal year. And as Commissioner Fritz has indicated, this is our third consecutive year in which the Bureau has not raised fees in most of our major permit categories. So, for the upcoming year, the Bureau is proposing only minor changes to fees that are related to site development and our enforcement program. And we do realize that fee changes do affect our customers and their willingness to do business in the city. And so, we have been proactive in reaching out to our customer base and to the community to inform them of these proposed changes. We've included information about our fee proposals on our website. We've included information in our widely distributed external newsletter, which is called The Plans Examiner. And we have also been in communication with our customer and our stakeholder groups, including the Development Review Advisory Committee. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Elshad to go through the specifics related to our proposal.
Good morning, Elshad Hajiav, Finance Manager for the Bureau of Development Services. As Deborah mentioned, we, the fee changes proposed this year, the goal is to achieve cost recovery, meet new program requirements, make sure that our fees are more transparent to our customers. Two fee schedules are impacted, site development fee schedule and enforcement fee schedule. Site development fee schedule, we are actually making that fee schedule more transparent to our customers. We are dividing our fees to make sure that the customers better understand what are they paying for. We're separating fees into inspection services fees and we end the plan review. The total that the customer will pay will not change, so there is really no impact on our customers on site development fee schedule. On the enforcement side, we are adding a new program, which is the short-term rentals or Airbnb. We are adding the renewal fees to four, six-year renewal fees. We're also making small changes to some of our fees on the enforcement fee schedule to make sure that those fees are at cost recovery. And some of them actually we're reducing, and some of them are slightly increasing. We're also adding some fees on enforcement side for portable signs to make sure that we have means to enforce that program.
So, it looks like some of them are going up and some of them are going down in the schedule here.
Correct, yes. Yeah. That's why we call them fee changes, not fee increases.
Right. Not all increases. So, what are, what are the code enforcement fees for?
So, basically, there are small increases to the nuisance work order inspection fees, to disabled vehicle tow warrant inspection fee, and then admin review fee. And then there are decreases to owner-requested inspection fees, Chapter 13 systematic inspection fees, and code enforcement reinspection fees. So, and they're really slight changes.
The code enforcement fees are new, though?
No, they're not new. They were just changing amounts slightly to make sure that they're at the cost recovery. So, some of them actually are going down because they exceed cost recovery.
Thank you.
Do we have any updated numbers on, on what we think the compliance rate is in the short-term rentals?
We don't, but handy, but we can get you those numbers.
But you're proposing to change the fees and, let's see, the, so, are the inspection fees going up or down or staying the same?
Are you talking about the?
Short-term rentals.
Short-term rentals. No, they're staying the same. We just, at the time when council approved the short-term rentals, we didn't have the renewal, renewals in the fee schedule. So, that's why we're putting them in the fee schedule, so we should be able to actually do inspections in certain two-year increments and then renew at the two-year increments too.
So, it's $159 for the first inspection?
Correct.
And then $62 for the renewal?
Correct, yes. And every six-year, there will be another inspection.
And have we heard any feedback from the community that that fee is, is the reason that the amount of the fee is, is a significant factor in the large, significant non-compliance that we're experiencing?
We haven't, no. And the fee is actually, is at the full cost recovery. It's the fee that we usually charge for our one and one-hour inspection, so, but we haven't heard anything from the community.
But $159 is your full cost recovery for this service?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other questions? Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone want to speak on this item? Sign up, speak.
We have four people signed up.
Okay.
Winston Michael Ray, Trina Sutton, Joe Walsh.
With me for one minute, Mr. Mayor. I do want to speak on this issue. I'm going to wear my traditional dress.
Also, Charles Jordan.
Johnson, I think.
Johnson?
I guess you're wondering why I'm dressed this way. Indulge me. First of all, I want to give my obedience to Almighty God for allowing me this opportunity, and I think this will be the only opportunity I will have and should take, to explain my position on what we just discussed. It all boils down to...
Yes, I'm sorry, just put your name into the record too.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at it right here too. My name is Winston Michael Ray.
Thank you.
My present position...
Don't need to have address, just your name, that's all.
Winston Michael Ray. But I must say this, I'm homeless, and I'm the happiest homeless man, homeless man in the world because I've just completed a 1,036-day campaign entitled Operation Hobo, which is an acronym for homeless one Barack Obama. Now, usually, I have on a certain shirt, which I don't have on today because it's not with me, and I want to show this picture. I don't know if it'll show on the screen, and, well, let's just say, we made a little quick readjustment there at the Capitol in Washington. That's me with a homeless shirt on. But let me get to the point. In regards to what we're discussing here, it boils down to one of two things. You're trying to make money and/or you're trying to save money. That's really the bottom line. The purpose I'm here, as I briefly discussed with you a couple of days ago when I first arrived here in Portland, is that Portland has the ball. I need your support. I need to know right now, sir, and distinguished body as well, will you be willing to publicly stand with the citizens of Portland on June 6th, which I dubbed Super Saturday, June 6th of this year, 2015, at preferably 3:00 in the evening, to let the nation know that Portland, Oregon is the first city in the world to embrace a worldwide marketing movement called SILVER, Worldwide Silver Rights Movement. Time won't allow me to get into the specifics. My number, you have all of that information, but this is where the ship docks. We're ready to launch a $100 billion marketing campaign literally in homelessness. This is the 44th city I have to go to. This is the final city. I'm working diligently with everyone that is connected directly and indirectly with the homes, including yourself, but with my, a lot of time here, is it possible I can get a commitment from you as mayor of this beautiful city to stand with us on June, on June 6th to make a brief announcement to the nation that Portland is the first city to embrace the worldwide civil rights movement? We have 22 seconds.
Well, we'll, certainly, this council's working on homelessness, so we're very interested in what you're...
Well, are you willing to work with me to launch a $100 billion marketing campaign on June 6th? That's the specific question.
Certainly like to hear more, so appreciate you being here today.
When can I meet with you on this? Because June 6th, I'm doing, I'm working in other areas. I need you, I need to know whether we're going to do this.
Check with my office and see what we can do. But thank you for coming today.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
And I have something for you all, and I'm going to leave it with the clerk.
Okay.
And, but we're moving very fast on this, and...
Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you, sir.
All right. Mr. Walsh, Mr. Johnson, who'd like to be next?
I'm Charles Johnson. Mr. Walsh has asked me to speak first. And I did notice that, as was mentioned by the staff, there's some new fee structures regarding the portable sign, but having attended this, ongoings in this chamber frequently, I know that citizens who've suffered severe emotional distress from the inability of this city to uphold its noise ordinances have had to come back to this council many times. And I'm hoping that you'll ask some direct questions of the staff after we speak to, so that people can know if this particular department, since it can assess things for mobile signs, is also the appropriate department to prevent the idiocy of construction noise outside in excess of permitted conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Walsh?
You know that the Office of Neighborhood has the...
Oh, your voice is today, but thanks for the reminder. This doesn't, clearly related to neighborhood involvement has the difficulty of dealing with construction noise, and I would like the city to reconsider if it could be perhaps more effectively or more appropriately related to the fee schedule for this is planning and sustainability, correct?
This is Development Services.
Development Services, yeah. So, okay, thank you. Mr. Walsh?
I'm losing my voice. I was at the Portland Building. My name is Joe Walsh, for the record, and represent individuals for justice. I was at the Portland Building yesterday, and there was a lot of construction going around your building. And it, the thought occurred to me that we have a noise ordinance, but I, for the life of me, cannot figure out how you implement and enforce that noise ordinance when you have people surrounding your building taking up concrete that are surely in excess of 80 decimals, which is the limit. I could hear them very clearly all the way over to the Portland Building, and they were on the other side of your building. So, it's very loud. So, the question comes up, if you don't like protesters, for instance, using bullhorns, and the police come and say, "Well, I can hear your bullhorn 100 feet away." Well, I was two blocks away from this noise, so what do we do about that? And I don't know how anybody did any work yesterday. I, if the noise was that bad for me, I put earphones on, which I rarely do, and I was listening to the KPR because the noise was so annoying to me, and I was two blocks away. So, what do we do with that? Do they get a waiver on the noise? Or do they just do it and everybody just says, "Well, that's construction, and too bad"?
We'll find out.
They get a permit and a variance.
Does anybody know if they had a permit and a variance?
We'll find out. Don't know.
That would be good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, anyone else on this item?
No.
Okay. Any further discussion from council, then this will pass to second reading. Thanks very much. All right, let's move to item 495.
495, revise transportation fees, rates, and charges for fiscal year 2015 to 16 and fix an effective date.
Mr. Novick.
Colleagues, this ordinance is PBOB's annual update of transportation fees, rates, and charges in accordance with city policy. The ordinance makes adjustments to fee rates and charges effective July 1st, 2015. The revenue from the fee adjustments is included in the mayor's proposed budget for PBOB. When setting fees, PBOB considers the city's priority for full-cost recovery and a reserve of sufficient revenue to support services during periods of declining economic activity. One thing I want to mention before turning this over to Christine and Jody is that one area where you see some fee increases this year is in Schedule D, fees involving lane closures and sidewalk closures. And with the boom in construction recently, we hear periodically from businesses who say that work on the street and the sidewalks is disruptive to their businesses, and we hear that, and that's a concern. And we think that if we add some additional staff resources to doing more intensive reviews, working with the developers and the, and the neighborhood to figure out how to mitigate those impacts on businesses, we should in fact be able to do so. Thank you. Christine?
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Christine Leon, and I'm the Portland Bureau of Transportation Manager of Development Permitting and Transit. So, I would like to just cover briefly some of the things before you today. So, PBOB's annual fee schedule includes six fee schedules. So, Attachment A is parking. B is land use reviews. C is development and right-of-way construction use and miscellaneous permits and fares. D is the reserved use for parking lanes and sidewalks. E is miscellaneous, which includes our leaf day fees, as well as film, video, bike parking, and et cetera. And then Schedule F is regulatory. With me this morning is Jody Yates, and she can answer questions regarding the regulatory and parking rates if there's, there's any questions later. So, essentially, one of the main differences between our fee increases and decreases and BDS is, is PBOB is not at full-cost recovery yet for a number of our, our fees. So, we also have insufficient reserves for operating to meet those city goals. So, some of our fees are increasing, some of them are remaining flat, and some of them are also decreasing. So, when we set our fees, we consider the customer impacts in the larger context of the comprehensive city fees and services. the comprehensive city fees and services. So a number of our fees are going to be incrementally increased this year to try to achieve cost recovery, where we haven't achieved that yet. They're also factored in based on the size and the scale of the development or the use. Consideration is given to the broader community use and impact, such as block parties and public art. The Bureau objectives in the Portland Progress regarding Vision Zero and livable streets are also factored in. Improving performance and customer service and being a partner with customers is also a huge factor, and providing efficiencies and innovation such as our utility coordination project and making sure that we're ready to deliver with the ITAP project. So for the past five years, PBOB has done outreach to our Budget Advisory Committee, Development Review Advisory Committee, private utilities, Northwest Natural Gas, PGE, PPN L., for example, community and neighborhood groups, permit holders, small and large businesses and restaurants, as well as our Development Services customers and frequent users. So this fee package includes input from those customers and those factors. So the programs that we are not going to be increasing any fees this year include our SDC rate, there will be no increase this year. Also, there is no increase to the area parking permit rates, no meter rate changes, no changes in the hourly parking garage rates, no changes to leaf day fee, Sunderland Yard recycling tipping fees and related fees. There are no changes to a number of other fees, but I wasn't going to cover all the Not all of the fees on these schedules affect any one customer or developer or property owner. As I mentioned, we are not at full cost recovery yet, particularly in the development review fees. So we have considered how those incremental adjustments would affect our customers. The increases do allow more cost recovery to be collected, as well as more GTR, general transportation revenue, to be allocated to other transportation services. So I'm going to get into a little bit more detail. Regarding the meter rates, there will be a committee forum to evaluate a meter increase, which will follow our current policy document prescribing of public process. For the private-for-hire transportation, there will be no changes at this time. However, I believe Jody will be at City Council in August with a recommendation from the task force. For the land use reviews, the majority of the increases are 15%, which we have capped. Half as many as those, though, are decreasing or remaining flat. A handful are capped at 25% increase this year as well. Building plan review fees are increasing also for PBOB. The residential are increasing at about 5% to 8%, and for commercial, it's increasing depending on the size. So the majority of the commercial reviews we get are less than $250,000 in value. Those fees will be increasing about $114 each review. We are capping the increase to our early assistance review at 5%. Again, it's another program that's not at full cost recovery for PBOB, but we feel that this will be a continued program to be subsidized by PBOB to give good customer service. The final plat reviews are decreasing by 15%. This is due to staff efficiencies and our good working partnership with Multnomah County, and I think just getting the word out to land surveyors and developers on the requirements of the plats. And then some of the other rates that remain flat regarding development are our Public Works Appeal Fees, as well as, as I mentioned, the SDC rates are remaining flat. Commissioner Novick mentioned the changes in Schedule D on the reserved parking use and the request for construction to use sidewalks, lanes, or a full street closure. And those fees are increasing to make sure that we have incentives for developers to mitigate the impacts of their construction on the users of the transportation system. So we are going to be doing an increased review and continuing through the utility and permit coordination to do an enhanced look at the requirements of developers with respect to sidewalk closures and making sure that there's a good reporting and a good inspection, and bringing on staff to make sure that we're doing that in a very timely fashion for developers. I'm going to turn it over to Jody to cover the last two items regarding the smart parking garages, smart park, parking garages, excuse me, and then the other.
Good morning, Mayor and City Commissioners. My name is Jody Yates. I'm the interim parking group manager. Regarding smart parks, the parking garages, those are the publicly owned garages, they're going to be mostly, the increases are in the monthly rates, and those are after we've done market analysis specifically looking at other garages specific to those areas. First and Jefferson Garage will increase from $180 a month to $190. O'Brien Square from $184 to $195. NATO and Davis has the most significant increase from $170 to $185. And Fourth and Yam Hill will be stopping the monthly program effective July 1. And that'll bring us into full compliance with our land use conditional permit, which has no monthly permits at any of the three retail garages. The retail garages are Third and Alder, Fourth and Yam Hill, and 10th and Yam Hill.
So we'll have no more monthly at those three garages?
With the exception of, we'll have some car pools which are allowed, and a couple of our tenants do get a monthly permit, but those are allowed. So, yeah. Daily rates will only change at that NATO and Davis garage from $10 to $11. And as Christine already mentioned, there will be no hourly changes or rates at any of the garages. Those will remain consistent. Regarding NATO and Davis, we're actually finding that we're at full occupancy by 9:00 to 9:30 in the morning and putting out the full sign. So this is to try and free up some of that parking and make it available for customers later in the day. The mission of the smart park garages is to allow for folks to have some off-street parking in those areas. So by already having a full garage at 9:00 AM isn't meeting our own mission, so we're trying to push some of those users into other spaces. Regarding the other fees, the only fee I have here that's going up is the film, video permit fees. And talking with our budget analyst, they can't find when they last increased that fee, and it is going up about 11%. But they looked back several years and have not increased it in many years, and that was supported by the film office as well. Are there any questions?
So, go ahead.
Did the council at some point make a decision to not have cost recovery in your fees?
So, Mayor and Commissioner, the council has been supportive of PBOB's methodology of doing incremental increases along the way with regard to being sensitive to our customers. So I don't recall that council has ever said, "Don't do full cost recovery."
Right, that was my recollection. I really commend Commissioner Novick and the mayor for all of the discussions we had last year highlighting the scarcity of general transportation tax revenue, and so it seems to me that our policy should be, you get what you pay for, and you pay for what you get, particularly as we're just following up from Development Services saying that they charge cost recovery. Next week up, we're bringing the urban forestry fees for land use reviews where we're going to be asking for cost recovery. So it would seem to me that, I appreciate you being sensitive to your customers, however, on the other hand, customers should be expecting to pay for what they get. So that's a policy discussion that maybe the council needs to have. I realize that this ordinance comes together right now.
Commissioner Freds?
Yes. If I just yield on one point, I believe the council has an official policy that we adopted in the last five, six years that requires all bureaus to move to cost recovery. So I think we've actually taken the position on that. Now, we've left it to the bureaus to how they phase that in, but I believe it is the official policy that we need to move to full cost recovery.
Yeah, that was my recollection too, so that might be something to look at. Did you want to comment, Commissioner?
Well, I mean, the idea here is to move to full cost recovery while having some sensitivity to the idea that in some instances that might result in percentage rate increases that customers might be startled by. And one of the things that's important to note is, as Christine pointed out, we're constantly reviewing how much time it actually takes to do certain reviews. So in some cases, actually, reviews take less time than they used to if we get a way to do them more efficiently. And other areas of places, we've realized that things are taking more time than they used to. So we're moving towards full cost recovery in a context of constantly reevaluating what each review actually costs. But this proposal will in fact move us closer to full cost recovery, though it won't quite get us there.
I would encourage you to be quicker, and also, the percentage increases may be less important than the dollar figure. So I don't know what the dollar figure is for $114, what the percentage is for $114 increase in the context of the whole scheme of how much it costs to build a new home. $114 doesn't sound that much to me, and I'd be interested to look at how do our transportation fees compare with other jurisdictions. I did have a couple of specific questions. We have had some discussions about credit card security and payment by credit cards at parking meters. I thought that that was going to be part of the proposed fees.
Are you referring to PCI?
Yes.
Okay. That's, we have a meter rate increase that we'll be evaluating with a subcommittee. We have a specific transportation policy that we have to follow if we do proceed with a meter increase, meter rate increase, we'll bring that probably in the fall bump, and you'll see that at that time.
That's coming later. Okay, that's good to know.
Yeah.
And then secondly, we recently raised the wages for people working in the parking garages to $15 an hour.
That's correct.
Why are we not raising the fees to pay for that? Why are we expecting the general fund to pay for that?
Well, you adopted that, I believe, last week, and we did evaluate what that is. It's roughly costing us about $250,000, but it'll be, we'll phase that in. We will be able to cover that in our budget, or we'll ask for a budget, we can ask for a budget increase later. We also have the ability in the garages to come back and change our rates, but we really like them to be reflective of the market and making sure that we're managing parking. The rates are really to manage the garages with the on-street system and make sure that there's parking available for folks.
In other words, we want to look at the on-street rate before we look at the garage rate again, even if we need to recover more costs from the garages, so that we don't have an incentive to circle the block and not go into the garage.
That makes sense. I would like us to be able to get the cost recovery in the garages in the light of the new-
The garages are at cost recovery, so their rate is okay.
Well, not if we've just increased the cost by $250,000.
We're still okay from the standpoint of we take the additional, any additional revenue, and that becomes part of our general transportation fund. So the garages are at full cost recovery with their maintenance.
But didn't we just allocate nine, or aren't we proposing to allocate $950,000 in the mayor's budget to help pay for the $15 an hour? Do you get any of that?
I'm not sure if it goes to transportation or just to general fund bureaus. That's a good question.
I'm unsure.
Can I follow up on a couple of those points? On the systems development charge that you are not recommending an increase, that's page eight of eight, exhibit C, what percentage of cost recovery is that currently?
So the SDC methodology is established by code and by the program that we have in place, and so the increases follow the cost of construction as set by the Federal Highway Administration, and so that's pretty much locked in.
But we are, what percentage of cost recovery are under the agreed-upon methodology?
So for the system development charges, it's not based on a cost recovery model on staff, it's based on a CIP forward-looking model of-
I apologize for not asking the question artfully, but we are at what percent towards that model?
So when we put in place our current citywide SDC list, council capped the rates that we would collect from developments at about, I believe it's about 40% of what the study indicated. So we are not capturing all of the costs due to growth for getting revenue for the projects that are on our citywide SDC list. Again, part of what council decided at the time is to have a rate set that was about in the middle of what the regional partners had for SDC rates.
And just in practical terms, if the SDC is not pegged to the actual impact of the new development, the cost, the incremental impact on the transportation, who covers the difference?
So the cost due to growth and new development from a system is allocated to new development. The cost for a frontage improvement, or if there is a level of service deficiency at a signal, is allocated towards new development or somebody going through a land use. The cost to fix our system and to get us into a state of having sidewalks everywhere and have the deficiencies all corrected is unfunded.
So if you didn't have a council directive to cap SDCs, and if you didn't care about what your customers thought about the rate, at page eight of eight, what would be your recommended rate for single-family residential? What is the true rate from your point of view, not the one that is adjusted by virtue of policy decisions of this council?
So our current citywide SDC program is in its second 10 years of the renewal. In 2017, it expires, so we're going to be starting a new committee looking at another renewal period, probably 10 years next year, involving citizens and technical stakeholders. So there's a lot of things that we can look at as far as new methods, footprint size-
Let's assume you don't, I appreciate the discussion, but assume you don't change the methodology, and maybe I'm being inartful in my questions, but I'm asking just a very straightforward question. If, given the current methodology, if the SDC reflected the full amount you could recover under that methodology without any limitation based on council, prior council actions or concerns about customer impact, the 2814 number would grow to what?
That's in our report. I will get it to your office.
Sounds like you're at 40%. It'd be somewhere north of $6,000, right?
I think so, but we have it studied, yeah.
I know that every SDC is different. We've gone through this recently with the Bureau of Environmental Services, where it turned out, you know, during the recession, the council rolled back the percentage for certain development because we're in a recession, and now we're going to roll it back to what we consider full cost recovery. So just be interested in what that number is.
We'll get to that for you.
And again, I'm building in the assumptions that council hadn't directed you to do something, and you're not taking into consideration the rate impact, the shock, the sticker shock. Just what would that number be in a perfect world, just so we have something to compare it to? On page seven of eight, on exhibit C, one of the biggest jumps that I can find in the charts is commercial buildings' value of a million, and it goes up quite dramatically. What's the reason for that?
So the commercial building review fee is not at cost recovery yet. So what the staff has done is looked at the time involved to do those reviews, and they become more complex with respect to developments that don't have parking requirements. So parking is accomplished in the neighborhood on-street, and so the neighborhood is involved in some of the decisions and the reviews. We want to get the word out and be a working partner with them. Also, loading is another issue that comes up.
Is it safe to say that, just as Commissioner Novick said, there may be some instances where you're doing certain reviews more efficiently and economically, and therefore the cost goes down? This is an example where the building plan review process has gotten more complicated, so the cost, the increase in cost reflects the additional staffing and cost of actually doing what you're required to do?
Yes, thank you. That's a good summary.
Sizing it, is that right, Commissioner?
Commissioner, I just have to say that I appreciate your inviting us to figure out exactly what we would be collecting if we actually wanted to pay for the projects that we think are necessary to accommodate growth. And that's why, we would hope that that would be part of an overall process of our, the citywide, looking at SDCs and kind of figuring out, okay, what will the market bear? And how should we allocate what the market will-
And how should we allocate what the market will bear among the various bureaus, in effect?
And I recognize that some SDCs are forward-looking, some are backward-looking. We have different methodologies, even between bureaus. But the one thing that I think is useful in this exercise is to compare the static, the number that we're adopting against whatever the ceiling is, and understanding what is the ceiling under the methodology. Because I'm not aware that anyone's raised a question about your methodology currently. But, so within your, assuming your methodology, what are the restraints that keep you from hitting the ceiling that you'd otherwise want to be at if that was what you're allowed to do? And that gives us a chance to then benchmark where you are and your recommendation. The last question I had was about meter rates and convening a committee. Of course, the most important thing about convening a committee is the charge you give the committee. So what do you intend to charge the committee with? They will be charged with coming up with a plan to generate more revenue for some specific purpose, or what in broad strokes would be the charge to the committee?
The charge to the committee is, we've gone and done an analysis of the parking spots within downtown, and actually, some of the other areas, South Waterfront, Lloyd, and find that the occupancy in downtown during several hours of the day is upwards of 90% to 95%. The ideal parking number is 85% for appropriate turnover. And so we're going to have them evaluate if they want to increase the meter rates to achieve more turnover. We'll also look at, are the time stays, so one-hour, 90-minute, two-hour spots, are those appropriate? Those are the general charges that we'll be giving the committee.
Good, thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, if I may, I just got a note from staff. So they are working back in the office and looked at what the rate would have been on the single-family residential without a cap, and it would be about $7,000. So the two constraints, though, in our SDC program are what we chose to look at for the capital list, as well as the cap that we had of 40%. So that's taking out the 40%. If we had had a broader list of capital projects, then it would have been a larger number. But that's just the self-imposed one from council.
So this good discussion highlights a couple of policy discussions. One I mentioned yesterday, that we, as a council, need to look at the cost of housing and our housing strategy, and the cost of our own fees as a component of that, and to look across the board. We're going to act on the Parks SDC today, but we need to look at all of our cost of doing business effects that we have as a city, so therefore, we need to look at this set of fees again as well. So I want to highlight, I think our discussion yesterday and today illustrate why it's important that we get to this at a higher level, at a more of a citywide view, and then bear down on, how is your bureau coming along against council policy, whether it's the policy to achieve cost recovery over time, or amendments or changes to that that we might make? So I want us to just flag the need for that. I think this helped highlight it. Secondly, I believe I've got this right. I came to understand during the budget process that we have another complexity with transportation systems development charges, in that they are accumulating quite a bit of money in the fund, but they're unable to spend it as rapidly as we would like, because they don't have non-SDC matching funds to couple with those dollars and spend them on actual projects, because those projects aren't 100% about accommodating growth. This project might be 62% about accommodating growth, or that project might be 45%, but they have to have the other percent, whatever it is, and they don't. So they're sort of gridlocked, not through any failure of administration, but just lack of resources. They're gridlocked on the ability to spend the dollars they have, which is a pretty different situation than we have in parks, you know, in terms of the ability to use the funds. So just wanted to flag that.
Mayor, can that, in part, be cured by changing the priority list for SDC projects?
In part, but it's pretty hard in a city that's mostly built like we are to find a project that's 90% about growth.
And if we were charging full cost recovery with the transportation SDCs, we wouldn't have to put so much general fund money in, as you have in this budget. We could use our general fund to then provide that match.
If we could, yes, if we had the match.
Yes, but we would have it if we weren't having to dedicate so much general fund into things like the $15 an hour in the parking garages and into the projects on the streets. So I think the principle should be that new development pays its way. And at this point, new development, I think it would be hard to stop it. And if there's a time to get full cost recovery, it's now or in the near future.
Yeah. One other small issue.
Oh, I'm sorry. I felt like I didn't answer Commissioner Fritz's question very well earlier regarding the $250,000 increase to the parking garages. Basically, we will be subsidizing that with our general transportation revenues, which I do believe was what you were getting at, so.
Which is...
And we shouldn't be doing that. We should be...
Something we ought to look at.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. I really appreciate your laying this out, Commissioner. I think partly because I learned so much last year about transportation funding and lack thereof, I really appreciate how you've been very clear on the strategy, why you're doing what you're doing, and I'm certainly willing to alter that in the very near future, because I think you should, that we may, we're certainly going to need to look for other revenue in addition to that. We should certainly make sure that the addition, the current funding mechanisms are getting cost recovery.
Just to state the obvious, we make money off the garages. If our cost increase, we make less money, but it's not like we're losing money off the garages.
That's correct.
So two other things I just want to flag. I didn't quite understand this before, but if you look at exhibit C, those fees, or several of them, are talking about the right-of-way use fees for skybridges and tunnels and such. That's essentially rent. We're renting you a piece of the right-of-way.
That's right.
Pioneer Place, or whoever you are, right? So that's not cost recovery, that's...
Market rate.
Market rate. So, interesting. Wanted to flag that issue in particular. We might want to look at whether that is, again, appropriate to current market values. Secondly, just wanted to flag the skybridge issue in particular, because I don't want us to get too addicted to skybridge revenue, because we have city policy that very explicitly discourages, and I think should outright prohibit additional skybridges, and we have a whole bunch of people that are proposing them right now. So we're going to have a policy conflict here shortly, at least in the form of some land use applications, where people think it's still possible somehow to get a skybridge, and I thought we'd close that door.
Well, actually, I think Commissioner Novick and I are interested in opening that discussion, because I think there are some places, the Russellville Retirement Home being one, where a skybridge makes complete sense, and there are other places, such as downtown, where we want to keep people on the pedestrian street, that it doesn't. So I think...
We'll have that debate.
I know that Commissioner Novick's willing to have that discussion.
Be careful about opening what a former county commissioner called Pandora's can of worms, because that's a wormy one.
So tune in next week for the battle of the skybridges.
Maybe several weeks, given what I've heard is coming our way. Third minor issue I wanted to just flag on Schedule D, which Commissioner Novick mentioned earlier, those are relatively modest fees for closing a lane or closing a street. I assume that's mostly during the construction process. We don't apparently differentiate between closing a lane on a street where there aren't parking meters and one where there is, or am I just missing that in the schedule?
So the Schedule D and the way you are assessed permits and fees vary depending on if you're in a meter district or not.
They do, okay. So we charge more, I would assume, if you close a lane and therefore wall off the access to a set of meters that we'd be earning revenue on all day long, all week long, while you have your street closure, right?
So the travel lane closure and the street lane closure don't vary depending on where you are in the city necessarily, but what does get affected is the reserve parking rate. So there is a historic partnership with BDS. They have a rate of 18 cents per foot that's assessed for parking spaces for construction in the meter district, which, on an average space, is about $8,000 a week.
Okay, I get it. All right, good, thank you. Other questions? We've peppered you with a whole bunch of them. Thank you for addressing all those council questions. Anything else for the two of you? Okay, thank you. And we'll see if there's anyone who signed up to speak on this item?
We had one speaker sign up, and that was Mr. Ray. Do you have more to say on transportation?
It's got to be on this issue, though, sir. It's got to be on just this issue. Not on your proposal, but on fees.
I did, I did, I left out something, I wanted to say last time. Well, on this issue, the only thing I could say, Mr. Mayor, is that it goes, it boils down to one thing, it's a money issue. And like every city, they're facing, every other city I've been to, I've been to 43, this is my 44th city, they're facing a money issue. And I think the best solution is embracing this worldwide marketing movement. I just want to say this, I won't get into that, but I just want to say this, I didn't get a chance to say this last time.
Sir, you really have to stay on that.
I will be a candidate for the presidency of the United States of America to address the needs of the poor and the struggling middle class, because the poor and the middle class does not have a voice in the Republican, all the Democratic parties.
Okay.
And I just want to make it clear that this is the city I will announce my candidacy from on June 6, and I need your support, and the whole nation will be watching Portland to see if she's going to do what she's supposed to do insofar as launching this $100 billion campaign that will literally end homelessness and get people off the streets with up to $3,000 of revenue earmarked for that purpose. So I have to say that, and if, on a closing note, if anyone wishes to reach me, I'm Winston Michael Ray. You can reach me on my cell at area code 206-939-0797. And this is the outfit I'll be wearing throughout my candidacy, so I thank you. But yeah, let's get back to the money issue. The city needs money, and we are earmarking enough of it to take care of the needs of the poor and things you need to bill up the city, to the infrastructure.
Thank you. Take care.
Thank you now, and I'm going to be getting back with your office, and we're going to meet soon, because we're looking at 17 days in county. Thank you now. Winston Netso will be your candidate as an independent for president.
Good morning, Commissioners. Charles Johnson for the record. I want to thank the mayor for raising the issue of street closings on streets versus non-revenue, non-parking revenue streets and parking revenue streets. But I also want to encourage the city to do better for all its citizens, not just ones that need a place to pay to stash their car. After the People's Climate March, when 400,000 people marched through the streets of New York, I was able to spend most of a month in Manhattan. And what I noticed in Manhattan is that although some people will say New Yorkers are brusque, the city cares about people. They have a Department of Homeless Services where anybody can go and get shelter if they don't have a complicating legal issue or mental health issue the very first night of their homelessness. And they have...
Could you go to the subject, Charles?
No, I'm actually going to drag it out for three minutes, because you're impatient, rude jerks, but...
Charles, please, we have a rule that people come and speak on the subject.
I'm getting to that point, and I don't care if the police take me out, so you can decide how long you want to be here. So the point pertaining to this, the point pertaining to this is that you close sidewalks. Go ahead, turn my microphone off.
Turn your mic off, Charles. You don't get to do this.
No, you don't get to do what you're doing. Let me get back to the point of collecting revenue for construction closures. That is the issue before us, is it not?
Then go to that issue, please. You know how to do that.
Your distractions are disgusting. However, the issue is sidewalk closures. How is it that a developed city can make skyscrapers happen without closing sidewalks, and you are constantly closing sidewalks for developers without, I don't, obviously, I'm a layperson, I'm not an employed expert on how the street closures and sidewalk closures happen, but it's crystal clear that, in addition to your good idea, Mayor, of assessing the revenue impact in parking availability spaces, we should also realize that all over the world, construction companies build things without closing sidewalks. And if construction companies are going to close sidewalks, I think that there should be a financial disincentive that helps cover traffic management in the city. Thank you.
Thanks. We actually have to close sidewalks more here than in other cities, Charles, because we have...
Blocks are tiny.
Because we have 200-foot blocks. Exactly. Yeah, in New York, they have much bigger blocks, so it's a practical question for how you can build anything on a postage stamp compared to where people build elsewhere in the world. Okay, let's move on to anyone else that has public testimony? If not, we'll take this to second reading, and then move on to 496.
496. Appeal of Preserve the Pearl LLC against Design Commission's decision to approve a new full-block mixed-use project in the Central City Plan District's River Sub-District at 1241 Northwest Johnson Street.
Okay, we have the findings before us. Anyone have any questions or concerns about the findings before I take a motion to adopt them? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? Roll call on adopting the findings.
Fish.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Novick.
Aye.
Fritz?
I thank Cara Ferranti and Jeff Mitchum from the Bureau of Development Services, also the Design Commission's diligent work on this project. Aye.
Hales?
Ditto to those compliments, and also to the design team and the applicant for coming up with a really excellent project. Aye. Okay, let's move on to 497.
What, Mayor? 505?
I'm sorry, that was consent. Sorry, wrong part of the agenda. 505.
505. Appoint Julie Livingston to the Design Commission for a, for your term to expire May 6, 2019.
I don't think Julie is here, but we have our staff here. Come on up.
Good morning. Tim Aaron, Bureau of Development Services. I am not Julie Livingston.
No, you sure aren't, but we're glad that you're here.
But I'm proud to introduce this. Just as a note, this originally was a consent item. A couple of weeks ago, we had just some paperwork shuffled, so this is a little unusual. But as Commissioner Fritz has stated, and you've already received information about Julie's application, she'll be filling the architect position, and desperately needed. We've been trying to fill a position since the fall. It's been challenging, as you know, of course, from the state of the city, just a month and a half ago, we were exceptionally busy in development, and it's been a hard time getting volunteers to be able to commit that dedication in time. So we're very, very, very happy to have Julie willing, as well as her employer, open to that kind of time and dedication, especially during business hours. So that's all I really have to offer.
And her experience with affordable housing projects is going to be useful.
Yeah, and since you prompted it, I think one of the favorite quotes I had in our appointment for her was, "To wrestle good design out of modest budgets."
You're here.
So, her words.
And it looks from the accompanying material here like we still have one vacant position, an architect position, is that right?
Correct, and we're working right now, both in Commissioner Fritz's office, and fortunately, I'll be able to work more closely with Dora Perry, just by geography, up in the building, which I'm excited about, and look for casting a deeper net of pool of commissioners to choose from, and we hope to be back again soon with additional appointments.
Great, thank you. Questions? Anyone want to speak on this item?
Yes.
On Julie Livingston, come on up.
One of the things that I noticed this morning, my name is Joe Walsh, Representative for Justice. One of the things I noticed this morning in the consent agenda is there are other people's names that are volunteering for these committees. And you do the consent agenda, and you put it all away, and they get no recognition. And that seemed to me annoying to me, that people give their time, they serve on your committees, and if you do consent agenda, they don't get any recognition at all, and it's just gone. So I would like you to consider at least reading the names of the people that are giving their time and recognize them. If you read the names, it would only take a few minutes. And, you know, because I'm an activist, I don't serve on committees, but if I did, and you just did not recognize me at all in your consent agenda, I'd be really angry. So my anger is transmitted to those people today that are going to not be recognized because they go under consent agenda. And I picked this item at the last moment, because there is the connection. She's being recognized, other people aren't. And even though if you're reappointing somebody and they're staying on the same committee, it's there... it's their time. You know, they're volunteers, they don't get paid at all. They may get a peanut butter sandwich at one of the meetings, but that's pretty much it. So please, figure out a way to recognize them. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I think we have been somewhat random as to whether these things are on consent or on regular, so it's a fair point.
I have a policy, and that is that I ask my nominees, would they like to be on the regular agenda or not? And sometimes it's a matter of whether they want to be here or not, but I think that is a fair point, that we should, and I often do, I just, I didn't this time. So I'm gonna take this opportunity to thank Vivek Chandras and Damon Shrosk, who are being appointed, who were appointed to the Urban Forestry Commission, and then Mayor Hales and Commissioner, wait a minute, that's the wrong one.
Right. Also Teresa Soto, Daniel Francoñez, Alicia Zhao, and Say Adam Edmo to the Human Rights Commission.
Yes, and we often do recognize them in that manner, but just so you know, Mr. Walsh, it is something that I give my nominees the choice about, whether they want to be on consent or regular.
Yeah, it's a good point. In one way or another, we ought to thank these people. They do a lot of work for free. You're absolutely right. Okay, that is previous agenda...
We didn't hear it there, we pulled it back.
So let's go to second reading?
No, excuse me, it's a report, so...
It's a report, not an ordinance? Okay.
Motion to accept the report.
Thank you.
Second. Thank you, Steve.
All right, roll call.
Fish?
Mayor, I have known Julie for a long time, and I've seen some of her greatest work that she did with Home Forward, where in affordable housing, development, and design, she brought a set of values to the table. A conviction that low-income people should be able to live in a space that's functional and beautiful, an attention to detail and to the bottom line, and ultimately to bringing very complex projects to fruition. And there are a number of them, including Bud Clark comments, that have her fingerprints on them. We're very lucky to have someone of her caliber serving in this capacity, and I enthusiastically support her nomination. Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Fritz?
Yeah, thank you very much to Julie for being willing to serve, and Tim Herron for his excellent staffing at the commission and the design process in general. As he mentioned, we are still looking for another architect. It's been vacant since last year, and I'm holding that vacancy because I want, really want someone from an underrepresented community to round out our commission membership. Julie certainly adds a lot of value in the scope of the work that she's done, and I really appreciate her service. Aye.
Hales?
Well, if you look at what's happening in the city right now with the amount of growth going on, these commissions are always important, the Landmarks Commission and the Design Commission, but boy, are they important right now. And we've seen from appeals cases how much controversy there is even to a well-designed project. So it's especially difficult duty and a lot that we ask of these folks. So thank you, Julie, and all those who are willing to do this work. Aye.
Mayor, point of order, just while we're on this issue, and Tim's here. I do notice that in the Design Commission guidelines, the representative of the Regional Arts and Culture Council is nominated by RAC and approved by the mayor, which I take it is conforms to the fact that prior mayors have had RAC in his or her portfolio. And I think that's an issue we ought to revisit, to the extent a mayor delegates the RAC liaison to a commissioner. I think it should probably say that it's either a joint process or...
Or it's the commissioner's charge.
Something. But if it's gonna bypass council, I think it should at least involve the commissioner in charge of RAC, which is not always the mayor. So perhaps we can think about that at some later date.
Love it. Before Mr. Savinar finally staggers away from the commission.
Until 2017.
He's chained. All right, thanks, Tim. Okay, item 506, please.
Authorize the city attorney to make application for the city to peer Amicus Curia in Lake Oswego Preservation Society versus City of Lake Oswego in support of clarifying Oregon's owner consent law to retain designated historic resources.
Could I just ask a question to Commissioner Novick, who is formerly a Justice Department lawyer and is fluent in Latin and Greek? Steve, would you pronounce the operative term again on friend of the court?
Well, what I was told in Latin class is that nobody actually knows how they pronounced anything, so I think that people now say amicus curiae, but that's just a guess.
Good enough for me. Mr. Burns, welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, member of the councils. My name is Al Burns, I'm a planner with the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability. We are asking for a resolution that gives the councils permission to participate as a friend of the court before a case that's coming before the Oregon Supreme Court. It's an important historic preservation case. It concerns Oregon's owner consent law. In 1995, the Oregon Legislature changed state land use law, and from that date forward, a city or a county could not designate a property as historic unless they had that owner's permission. That same legislature made a provision for people that had already been designated, that if that designation had been imposed on them, they could request the designation be removed, and the city or county would have no choice other than to remove that historic designation. A recent case in the City of Lake Oswego, they removed a designation on the Carmen House on the request of a present owner, not the original owner. That was contrary to how the City of Portland understood the law. We thought that an owner that bought an existing historic property with open eyes could not ask for that designation to be removed. That case went through the Land Use Board of Appeals. The board remanded to the city. They agreed with our position. When the case got to the Court of Appeals, the Court of Appeals reversed the Land Use Board of Appeals and said that a current owner could ask for a designation to be removed if a previous owner had objected, and perhaps even more problematic, we had never been asked. So this decision, if it's affirmed by Oregon Supreme Court, puts about 1,700 Portland local landmarks, designations, at risk of having their designations removed. It's a significant case, and that's why we're asking for the council's permission to participate as a friend of the court. What loss of designation would mean would mean that these properties would no longer be subject to historic design review or a 120-day demolition delay. Thanks.
Potentially a big deal. Yeah, thank you. Questions for Al? Thank you very much. Anyone wanna speak on this item?
We have three sign up. Charles Johnson, Brandon Spencer-Harr, Fred Leeson.
Come on up. Okay, Mr. Johnson, you're on first.
Thank you, Commissioners, for the record. My name is Charles Johnson, and I want to thank you for helping the city attorney's office refocus on issues that really matter to the citizens. As you know, we often berate you for your appeal decision regarding Judge Simon and this United States of America versus City of Portland and Portland police abuse of mental health people. So I'm glad to see that other people have signed up here, and will more cogently tell you, hopefully, why it is important that you let the city attorney be amicus on this, so that we can protect historic structures, and hopefully it will even bite you in the butt about the reservoir. Thank you.
Mayor Hales, Commissioners, my name is Brandon Spencer-Hardell. I manage education and advocacy for the statewide nonprofit Restore Oregon. Restore Oregon has been involved with this case since before it went to the Lake Oswego Historic Review Board, so about two years. We've been working with Carrie Richter of the law firm Garvey Schubert Behrner on filing as an amicus party in this case, and Carrie is here if you have additional questions about the specifics of the case. We've been really pleased with council's recent engagement on historic preservation issues, specifically changes to Title 24 regarding demolition codes for non-designated historic resources. Today, we're here to talk about a court case related to historic resources protected by Portland's zoning code, which is different than those covered under Title 24, that you heard a couple of months ago. The Lake Oswego case concerns the following historic resources here in the City of Portland: local landmarks, conservation landmarks, contributing buildings in conservation districts, and properties listed in the historic resource inventory. Historic preservation protections for these resources are outlined in the zoning code, and primarily, those resources are afforded a 120-day demolition delay, both in the zoning code and by state law, to ensure adequate opportunity for the community to find alternatives to demolition, such as relocation, partial salvage, or a sale to a preservation-friendly buyer. Our analysis finds that there are approximately 3,000 properties in Portland that have been designated with one of these local designations. I know that the city attorney found that it was about 1,700. But previous to February's Court of Appeals decision, it was held that unless the property owner at the time of designation objected to listing, the designation would maintain with the property. Using the available sale data and the time that we've had, we estimate that there are over 75% of these locally designated resources that have changed hands since the time of their designations. So those are the properties this case specifically concerns. The City of Portland's participation in this case will go a long way in helping us maintain our existing historic resources and the protections granted to them by the zoning code. And I also wanted to say, in performing our research for this case, we believe there are opportunities for the city to better protect our local historic resources while the court considers this case. Should you vote today to support the resolution in front of you, a follow-up with each of your offices, the Landmarks Commission, and the staff at BDS and BPS, with legally defensible recommendations on how we protect local historic resources while the court considers this case. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Fred Leeson, Board President, Bosco Milligan Foundation, and its Architectural Heritage Center at 701 Southeast Grand. I'm pleased to tell you I'm not running for president. We are appreciative that Mayor Hales brought this issue to the council, and we urge you to approve it. I think the resolution itself speaks with admirable clarity, so I'm not gonna belabor the facts of it. The underlying importance is that our historic buildings and places are vital elements in making our city a special place. The city and our future are diminished when we lose them. I'm reminded of a quotation from my favorite historian, Daniel J. Borstyn, who once wrote, "When any place becomes more like every place, it became hard to believe that any place was special." We believe that Portland's voice needs to be here to help us maintain our special place. We had the option today of inviting a whole bunch of other people who were willing to lecture on this topic, but our board felt that that was not necessary. We didn't need to badger you unnecessarily, because we like to think you're gonna do the right thing, and I'm sure you will. Thanks.
Thank you all.
I'm refreshing.
And, you know, if you did...
Don't disappoint us.
If you ran for president, you might get some support around.
I doubt.
Anyone else wanna speak on this item? Okay, then let's take a roll call vote, please, on the resolution.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Fritz?
Officer, this is a very important issue, and I'm pleased the city will be weighing in with the Supreme Court, thanks to the city attorney's office, and let's hope they do the right thing. It would make it pretty meaningless to have a historic designation if it can be taken off at any time. Aye.
Hales?
Yeah, thank you all, and thank Al Burns and others who've brought this forward from the Bureau, as well as people in the community that care about this. You know, Nancy and I live in an old house, it was built in 1930. We believe we have fundamental property rights that go along with owning a piece of real estate, but we also have a community responsibility, when you own an old building, to take good care of it for the sake of the community. Our house doesn't happen to be on the landmarks list, but even without that designation, I think any of us that own a building that is historic have that responsibility. And if it's a designated landmark, where the community's gone through a legislative process and designated it as a landmark, even more so. And that's what we try to do in our regulations, is strike a balance between that fundamental property right and that stewardship responsibility that goes with a historic landmark. So I think it's really important that we maintain the community's ability to have that authority and exercise it responsibly. We are in a somewhat unusual situation in this case, in that we are taking the position of the Lake Oswego Historic Preservation Society and opposing the position of the City of Lake Oswego. However, I've talked to Kent Studebaker, the mayor of Lake Oswego, about this issue, and he's not particularly aggrieved if the city of Portland does this today. So it's always important, if we don't agree with our neighbors, to at least talk with them, and I did so, and it should not dissuade us from proceeding in this case. So thank you all. Aye. Okay, 507. Thanks, Fred.
507. Authorizing intergovernmental agreement with Portland State University for $304,000 under the 2014 Bureau of Justice Assistance Smart Policing Initiative Grant Program to provide research and services to the police bureau for the study of the Neighborhood Involvement Locations Program.
Hey, Sergeant Stewart and Dr. LaBisciaire are here, I think. Welcome, come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, and thank you for having us. I think most of you are familiar with this, but just to make sure everybody's up to speed, I'll kind of cover the history of this briefly. In approximately 2012, both the police bureau and city council became interested in taking a more evidence-based approach to policing. The council heard from Dr. Cody Talep, from now Arizona State University, about some of the best practices nationally in policing, and some of the evidence-based approaches different localities have been attempting. Then Chief Reese attended a conference in Seattle on evidence-based policing. One of these approaches was something called hotspot policing. Hotspot policing has history in Portland, that there are a lot of community members who are concerned about it. We began exploring it as a potential evidence-based approach to reducing crime. With input from the mayor's office and different portions of the community, we realized that hotspot policing is its practice, and a number of localities would not be consistent with the values of Portland. We took that input and modified the program. We attempted to use high-visibility patrol as a crime deterrent, while using foot patrols or encouraging officers to get outside of their cars, interact more directly with the community, as a community engagement piece. As an important piece of this, and as part of the evidence-based process, we partnered with Portland State University, so that we could adequately study what we were attempting to do, and we ran a randomized control trial. As part of that, we applied for a grant, which was initially not accepted. However, with the support of the mayor and the chief and current chief, O'Day, we were able to run the experiment despite not being funded. That was a fairly novel approach to policing nationally. The Bureau of Justice Assistance was excited about it and returned to us, and asked that they then kind of retroactively fund the grant and help pay for the research of this program. As part of the grant, we'd agreed to partner with PSU on the research. Portland State University spent actual money on their own part to fund a number of these activities. They also dedicated hundreds of hours to this grant as part of the grant application process. It was a competitive process, and the participants were scored, with Portland State University being recognized as a partner. And I'll let Dr. LaBisciaire talk about kind of the research steps being taken. This particular piece of the project is solely focused on the research for what has already occurred. As the program moves forward, we need to engage in additional community outreach to build the program and build community support for the program, and make sure the program stays focused on the community values. However, this particular piece is directly related to the research. And, Doctor, could you kind of describe some of what we've been engaged in?
Sure. Good morning. I think first it's helpful to frame what the research is actually studying. NILAC frames itself as directly in opposition to how hotspot policing stopped in frisk, as it was operationalized in New York. So it's not hotspot policing. The framing on it is neighborhood involvement location. I think first was the shift in what it is that we're attempting to do, or the initiative is attempting to do. And understanding the impact that hotspot policing, or that the purpose is to really begin to think very, very differently about how we approach public safety, and that public trust and community building, community relations, is really at the heart of what it is attempting to do. So the research is really attempting to understand what happens, what the impact of this initiative is on the officers, and on how the citizens are experiencing their interactions with the police officers. We've conducted a focus group with the officers, focused on their experience, their understanding of what NILAC was, how the public interacted with them, and talked to the officers about how that began to really shift how their understanding of how they can better build trust and community. We've also conducted a survey, and we're beginning to connect the findings from the survey with what we are learning from the focus group. Within the survey, we want to understand the experiences of different citizens with this form of involvement. So equity is a really, is a significant value in this. We want to understand how this engagement is changing the public perception of the police.
So tell us a little more, Dr. LaBisciaire and Greg, about how the council and the community will get the results of this research. So you're doing... So you're doing this work, you've got your colleagues at PSU assisting and analyzing your findings. When do we sort of put that out there as a research product, not just in, you know, at PSU, but also here for the council and for the community? I think people will want to know, when do we see the results of this and what will we learn?
I've got the plan, so I can at least cover that. And then if I miss anything, the doctor can correct me. So as part of this grant application, we had to turn in an action plan to the Bureau of Justice Assistance regarding the research, which I can provide to anyone who's interested. And it explicitly spells out both the research questions of the project, as well as providing timelines for when we'll produce documents or reports on those research questions. We're kind of behind time now because there's been some, just the process of getting the grants approved and getting the money released. But basically, there'll be two evaluations. There'll be a process evaluation, which is really focused on kind of the, did we do what we said we were going to do? The research questions related to that will include officer perceptions, whether the locations identified were optimal, whether the time spent, it's called dosage compliance in the research jargon, but it really means is, were we there when we said we'd be there, as much as we said we'd be there? And then the activities of the officers in those areas, including stop activities, to make sure there was a lot of community concern about this driving up the number of stops, which at least initial, not the scientific research, but our estimates are that it actually decreased stops. How it impacted officer discretionary time, and then the sustainability of the program. Then the second major evaluation will consist of an impact evaluation, which has seven research questions. The first regards community attitudes, which in really a pretty novel, and I'm actually quite proud of this because the Portland Police Bureau played a major role in the mapping of this, in a really novel strategy towards identifying more specific concerns of community members. We conducted very focused surveys on the localities around where this occurred. So in the immediate location, and then a buffer zone of about 500 feet on each side, and one of our analysts was really integral in the development of that, which is a fairly novel approach to this. We conducted extensive community surveys. We're also going to examine, of course, its impact on crimes and calls for service. I mean, was it effective as a crime reduction strategy? While the overall technique's been demonstrated to be a crime reduction strategy, we've really modified it to meet kind of the values, remain consistent with how Portland does things. So we really can't use the national research on this because we've taken a really different approach. So we're going to examine that. Again, we're going to examine dose response, like was it responsive to how much we were there? We'll examine non-investigative versus investigative stops, and this is a significant component to the equity research. And one of the nice things about this is because we have control locations, we'll be able to look at, does just the identification of this location has potentially high-crime impact behavior? The team we've assembled includes both social psychologists as well as criminologists. So there's a number of questions related to social psychology and how officers perceive these locations that we'll be able to explore, which could be important as we move forward in terms of how we want to label our activities in such a way as to influence officers to, you know, behave in the ways that the chief would like and the community wants. We're also examining displacement. And then the last question revolves around kind of the, some traffic accidents and some other unintended consequences, either positive or negative, that may kind of be revealed through the analysis of the data. The project itself, the grant is for three years, so we're kind of approaching these sequentially. Our initial sort of questions or processes are focused on both community attitudes and officer attitudes, because as we operationalize this and move forward, we felt those would be the two most valuable questions to impact how we want to approach this going forward. Because it's extensive research and because the research will be conducted over a course of years, we're kind of trying to approach it in such a way that we learn things more immediately that will impact how we go forward and then adjust otherwise. And I can provide you, again, the timeline's no longer exact, but we have a timeline which spells out both the activities, who's conducting the activities, and then when reports will be disseminated.
That'd be useful, I think, for the council to see that. And then we might also want to try to combine some other reporting that we're doing, whether it's under the DOJ settlement or otherwise, with this work, so that the council gets a picture, here's what the independent research at PSU is showing, here's what the analysts that we're funding in this year's budget in the Bureau are doing, you know, here's the data about the interaction, and not just in the NILAC effort, but elsewhere in the Bureau as well.
And just for city council to be aware of, this is actually, our time with the city, while this is for the intergovernmental agreement, the Bureau of Justice Assistance is actually providing the city with an analyst for the duration of this grant, as well as other monies, approximately $400,000 and change, I believe, to help pay for the city's participation in this. So we'll be receiving the research, but the citizens of Portland won't necessarily, you know, be out of pocket for our participation in this.
Great. Thank you. Questions?
Did you track the demographics of both the officers who were involved in the hotspot patrolling and also their focus groups?
I don't know about the focus, I'll let you ask those focus groups.
Yes, we did. We have the data on demographics, gender, race, ethnicity of those who participated.
I'd be very interested to see if there are differences in the perception of the officers in different demographic groups. That would be helpful, as the mayor said, in our Department of Justice reports work. I was interested to see that the officers who were involved in the focus groups received a $100 gift certificate, and I'm wondering why.
That's actually normal for this kind of research. This was not, that was not provided by the police bureau. Frequently, when people conduct focus groups, they're given incentives to attend them.
And there was only officers attending this? It wasn't community members as well?
Right. There weren't community members. The focus groups were specific to the officers.
So was there any compensation to the community members who participated in the survey?
No, and that was for a different reason. The survey was done ad hoc, basically, with no money, so that we would have liked to, we would have really liked to have had money to use an incentive for those surveys. However, we were doing it all without funding at that point. When the surveys, as, it's kind of technical, but we did a roll-through. Because of the number of calls this took, they were actually staggered in over time. So one group of locations would come online. As they end, we'd have to survey the community that was in that area because we couldn't wait too long. And at that point, the Bureau and PSU were both just putting their own money into it, and we didn't have any money for that.
But if PSU had money for the officers, wouldn't that have been better spent compensating community members?
That happened later, after we'd received the grant. That occurred-
They had that option earlier.
Correct. The timing was such that the surveys were going out while the project was ongoing and was non-grant funded. We wouldn't have done the focus groups if we hadn't have received the grant to pay for it, because it would have just been too expensive.
Well, I'm very much appreciative of the evidence-based approach. It seems to me this is part of the Bureau's work, to be evaluating how we're doing things. So providing additional compensation to officers who participate doesn't sit well with me, especially when we're not able to provide community members with compensation.
I understand those concerns. I do think it's important to recognize that in our prioritization of the data we were collecting, that occurred because we prioritized gathering the community, the survey data from the community above the officer data. So the officer, the focus groups wouldn't have occurred. So the reason the community didn't receive that was because we did it first off to make sure we could collect those data.
Right, but you could just assign the officers to go to the focus group, right?
I'll let the doctor talk about that.
I think the focus group is a considerable amount of time investment, and I think the plan is eventually that we will be doing focus group with community members, and we would be compensating community members in that way as well.
Were the officers on work time or on their own time?
No, they were on their, it was, it's, this was totally separate. I don't even know what officers went. Like, I'm not allowed to see those data. This is part of, as the research ended, they've submitted the research ethics-
The IRB Institutional Review Board.
So when you get to the community focus groups, then you will be providing compensation?
I think partly as a result of the methodology. Typically, we pay people for participating in focus groups. For surveys, we don't often pay people. So eventually, as the research rolls out, where we'll be inviting community members in focus group, we'll also be compensating them similarly.
And the officers attended on their own time. I think that's really important. I apologize for not, I can see how that would cause some consternation. This was done completely independent of the Bureau. The officers, all we provided was a list of people who had done them, and the researchers conducted that portion of that, kind of in, it is sort of a best practice. I don't know who went, and the Bureau, and the officers who went were told that so that they could be, you know, completely open, forthright in their answers.
Thank you. That's a good explanation. I appreciate it.
Other questions? Great. Thank you both for being here. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Look forward to more. Okay. Want to take public testimony on this? Anyone want to speak on this? Ordinance?
Joe Walsh and Charles Johnson.
For the record, my name is Joe Walsh. I represent Individuals for Justice. Once again, Commissioner Fritz took a lot of steam away. It was a red flag for me also. When I was reading the documentation and realized the officers were getting a $100 gift certificate for taking part in this, and I, the first thing I wondered, are these guys being paid and then getting this $100? It seems to me that, if I understand it correctly, they were volunteers, not being paid, and they got the $100 gift certificate as compensation. Also, the point that the good commissioner raised about the civilians is a good argument, that whatever happens with the police department surely should happen with the civilians, and they should be compensated also. One of the things that we had a problem with this is that, to us, and we may be wrong on this, this is a classic process taking place that is eating up $700,000, because at the end of the day, at the end of the process, you're going to have a study. That's the way we're reading it. This is a study that's being done by PSU and the police department to find out, basically, what kind of relationship they have with the citizens of Portland, which is an honorable thing. I don't have a problem with that. But I can give you free. The relationship sucks. We don't trust the police department. Everybody is telling you that. Why are you spending $600, almost $700,000 to find out that we don't trust the police We have studies being done by the settlement. We have co-abs trying to study what's going on with the police department and the relationship between the police department and the citizens. Why are we spending $700,000? And I know it's not our money. It's state money. Lady and gentleman, it's taxes. Some little old lady is paying that. Some guy working 80 hours a week is paying it, and it is tax money. It is not free money because it comes from the state. And I fear your attitude is, well, it's state money. Hell, we got a grant, let's go spend it. And what do you have at the end of the day? Another dust-collecting study that tells you that the citizens of Portland do not trust the police department, and I'm offering to do it free. Maybe a mocha. Buy me a mocha. Thank you.
Still, good morning, commissioners. For the record, my name is Charles Johnson, and I want to thank Commissioner Fritz for highlighting that little structural abnormality where officers that were volunteering their time, like a lot of other focus group members, got compensation. I don't know how long, how many hours that focus group took, but I really appreciate Commissioner Fritz bringing that to light, because there is a problem, besides the problems of what the Portland police do wrong, that turns into lawsuits that the city has to pay out, there's also a public perception problem in many neighborhoods of the city about the conduct of the Portland police. And I hope that this study and the almost $700,000 involved in this grant will be wisely and effectively used to reduce harm from police, reduce harm even to police, and improve community relations. To do that, you all are going to have to stay hands-on and possibly even ask that there be an additional focus group along with this, where people from the NAACP, from the Urban League, from the Albina Ministerial Alliance, they don't need to get a $100 gift, but they need to, the organizers of the study and you, need to really sell, even though it's free money from the state and from other taxpayers, you really need to, I think, do an extra PR, not just PR, but a real caring community thing, to have stakeholders understand this study and how this study is going to be a wise expenditure to improve police conduct and police-community relations. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then roll call on the emergency ordinance, please.
Fish.
Aye.
Salzman.
Aye.
Novick.
Aye.
Fritz.
Aye.
Hales.
Aye. 509.
Authorize the Bureau of Transportation to acquire certain permanent and temporary rights necessary for construction of the northeast Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard and northeast Columbia Boulevard intersection project through the exercise of the city's eminent domain authority.
Mr. Novick.
So the only preamble I give is that this is not about us exercising eminent domain, which we hope we won't have to do. This is about having the authority to do so before we go into this process. Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Commissioner Novick. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Marty Maloney with the City Portland Right-Away Section. This agenda item is to authorize the Bureau of Transportation to acquire certain permanent and temporary rights necessary for construction of northeast Martin Luther King Boulevard and northeast Columbia Boulevard intersection project through the exercise of the city's eminent domain authority. The intersection project will improve turning movements for large freight trucks by constructing a dedicated westbound and northbound right-hand turn lane from Columbia Boulevard to MLK Boulevard. The project will also construct a seven-foot sidewalk adjacent to the proposed right-hand turn lane along the transition of the intersection. The project will also construct ADA ramps, as well as new mast arms at the, mast arm signal poles at the intersection. I'd also like to add that I've spoken to all the owners-
Want to power forward and break at 12:30 if we don't? Okay, let's move to item 508.
508. Authorize a contract with the lowest responsive bidder and provide payment for the construction components of Road 10, mile post 3.0 to 4.6 project at an estimated cost of $889,000.
Second reading and roll call, please.
Fish.
Aye.
Salzman.
Aye.
Novick. Fritz.
Aye.
Hales.
Aye. 509.
Authorize the Bureau of Transportation to acquire certain permanent and temporary rights necessary for construction of the Northeast Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard and Northeast Columbia Boulevard intersection project through the exercise of the city's eminent domain authority.
Mr. Novick.
So, the only preamble I give is that this is not about us exercising eminent domain, which we hope we won't have to do. This is about having the authority to do so before we go into this process. Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Commissioner Novick. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Marty Maloney with the City Portland Right-Away Section. This agenda item is to authorize the Bureau of Transportation to acquire certain permanent and temporary rights necessary for construction of Northeast Martin Luther King Boulevard and Northeast Columbia Boulevard intersection project through the exercise of the city's eminent domain authority. The intersection project will improve turning movements for large freight trucks by constructing a dedicated westbound and northbound right-hand turn lane from Columbia Boulevard to MLKA Boulevard. The project will also construct a seven-foot sidewalk adjacent to the proposed right-hand turn lane along the transition of the intersection. The project will also construct ADA ramps as well as new mastarms at the, mastarm signal poles at the intersection. I'd also like to add that I've spoken to all the owners with more significant right-of-way impacts, and they all understand the necessity for improvements due to heavy freight use. I'd be happy to answer any questions council might have.
Questions? Thank you very much. Any testimony on this item? Okay, anyone want to speak on this item? All right, then, this is an ordinance? No, it's an emergency ordinance, so roll call, please.
Fish.
Aye.
Salzman.
Aye.
Novick.
Thank you, Marty. Aye.
Fritz. I'm guessing I'm the only member of council who has campaigned standing on this corner with my sign, and this will make it much better should I choose to go back there. Aye.
Go back there safely now. Aye. Okay, item 510.
510. Accept Park System Development Charge Methodology Update Report for Implementation and amend the applicable sections of city code.
Okay, and I want to propose an amendment that we adjust to the effective date of the regulations, A and C, which are the fee schedule itself, to July 1st, 2016. Yes.
Commissioner Fritz, if we are, we would be, if that amendment, we would be delaying the effective date of fees increases, which should pass next week at a second reading. The exemptions that are proposed in this report will be effective within 30 days, correct?
That's right, Seth. It only would change the fee schedule starting on July 1st, and the capital improvement plan and the authorization for the Lewis and Clark refund, which your directives, B and D, would be effective in 30 days after we pass the ordinance.
Thank you.
Okay, other discussion about the amendment? So, roll call on the amendment, please.
Fish.
Aye.
Salzman.
Aye.
Novick.
Aye.
Fritz.
Thanks to my colleagues, Commissioner Fish and Mayor Hales, for working this through with us, and also for my Parks team for their great work on this entire project, which we'll be voting on next week. Aye.
Hales.
Yes, and I'll have more comments next week as well, but I appreciate Commissioner Fritz and the bureau coming up with a methodology that does make sense for the Parks Bureau for the next 20 years. And I think you and your team, your consultant did a good job of explaining that. I also think, and we've discussed quite a bit in the council over the last couple of days, the need for us to look at all of our fees and all of our costs, including these, and make sure that we are attentive to the need to keep this city affordable even while we pay for public infrastructure. So, look forward to more of that discussion, not just next week when we adopt this set of fees, but also as we work on that bigger-picture view. But thank you very much, I appreciate this change, and we adopt the amendment, and it will return for second reading next week. Okay, 511.
511. Assess property for sidewalk repair for the Bureau of Maintenance.
Second reading, roll call.
Fish.
Aye.
Salzman.
Aye.
Novick.
Aye.
Fritz.
Aye.
Hales.
Aye. We recess till 2:00 P.M. Thank you. There we go.